Okay, got it. All right. Well, hello everyone and thank you for joining us. Christian, do you want to kick it off?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks Serena. Well, yeah, listen, welcome to our 2023 city council debates. It's hosted by Schneps, Queens Post, and Politics NYC. My name is Christian Murray, co-founder of the Queens Post with Serena many years ago. And I'm also a digital editor at AM New York, and the pair of us will be moderating tonight. As you know, fifty-one city council seats are up for grabs with redistricting. Obviously, this one is two. And tonight, we have the three candidates running for the Democratic primary for the twenty-third district, which of course covers eastern Queens, neighborhoods of Bayside Hills, Belrose, Douglaston, Floral Park, et cetera, et cetera. The current council member, of course, here is Linda Lee, who took office in 2022. Now, this year's Democratic primary for the district, of course, includes Linda and Steve Behar. Steve, thank you for coming. And Rabia Rahman, thank you very much for coming as well.
Thank you.
And also, yeah, Serena is joining us, and she again co-founded the sites, and she's co-moderating. So I'll put you on her good hands for now.
All right. Well, thank you again, and welcome to all the candidates. Tonight's debate will include two rounds, with the first round being questions that we've prepared, and then a second round with questions coming from the viewers. So to all of tonight's viewers, if you have a question you would like to ask the candidates, please submit them using the Q and A feature at the bottom of the screen. The questions received will be screened, and those selected will be put out to the candidates. So now let's go to opening statements. Each candidate has ninety seconds for their opening statement to introduce themselves. And let's start with Steve.
Good evening. My name is Steve Behar. I was the council to the previous council, council member Barry Gudentchik for six years. Before that, I was a council to state Senator James Sanders Jr. I am a corporate finance lawyer by trade. I started my career at the Securities and Exchange Commission as an attorney under President Bill Clinton in Washington. I went to a Wall Street law firm for a while. I was corporate counsel at Toys R Us, and then I had my own my own small practice, solo practice, literally on Wall Street where my clients were small businesses. I've got a BA in economics and political science from Albany, an MBA in finance and management from Tulane University, a JD from Tulane University, and a LLM in securities and financial regulation from the Georgetown University Law School. I moved into the district when I was six years old, and I've been active in this community for decades.
Thank you, Steve. Linda?
Hey, hi, everyone. So my name is Linda, and I'm a social worker, a mom, public school parent. And I have, as many of you know, dedicated my entire career before I took office, working in the nonprofit sector, meeting people where they are, and providing direct social services to the community, and always trying to be a voice for the most vulnerable, especially our seniors and kids. And, you know, when I was at my nonprofit, I was running Meals on Wheels programs, you know, senior centers, and it's actually really great because now as the council member, it's been amazing and, you know, a privilege to actually fund a lot of the programs that I used to once run, including a lot of the sukkasas, you know, elder abuse awareness workshops, ensuring that everyone has meals, and also, you know, protecting our retirees, and I'm co-sponsoring Medicare legislation for the retirees. And so, you know, as a public school parent, I've also been able to fully fund the schools, which we have amazing public schools in this district, which is why a lot of people move here. And also around public safety and, you know, a lot of the, you know, community issues that people are worried about, you know, I'm always trying to meet the needs of the community, reflect the community voices through policy, funding, and legislation. So that's what I have been doing before in my previous role and hat as a social worker, and I will continue to do that and meet the community where they are and be that voice and advocate for them.
Thank you very much. Rabia?
Hi, thank you for having me. First of all, I am a mother. I have raised two children in this beautiful New York City. I went to law school at the same time I went, I did my LLM from NYU School of Law. And previously, I was an attorney in Bangladesh. I was a law professor in the Department of Law in the Dhaka University. I had a long career with legal business, and then I moved here because my son, he has autism, and during that time, like in nineteen ninety-eight, there was no such service in Bangladesh. So I moved to this country for a better life, better future for me and my family. And to tell you the truth, it was a nice start because I should say that there were a lot of opportunities with my law school and everything. But since my son had autism and I'm an immigrant, I saw that there is a big gap in the resources and the community. I moved to District Twenty-three, like twenty-two years back. And from then, I know that this district has a lot of diverse community, and the diverse community has their diverse need. So we need some councilperson, councilmember, who comes from the daily life people, who understand the struggle of people, and of course, they have to know how to resolve it. I have started a nonprofit organization for children with challenges like autism, cerebral palsy, all this disability, and I have known firsthand that how difficult it is to raise a family when you have somebody challenged, even if you have an elderly person who has dementia or Alzheimer. So we want to focus in the community, safety of life, safety of our children, good school, good parks, and safety, security all around.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to the first round of questions, which Christian and I will ask of the candidates. In this round, each candidate will have two minutes for their answer. Up to two minutes, and candidates will each have one minute to provide a rebuttal if needed. Candidates, I will be keeping track of the time as we go. You will hear this sound when your time is up, and please raise your hand if you have rebuttal, so we may call on you. We will go back and forward in terms of who answers first. Steve will start with the first question, and then Linda and Rabia and so on. So for the first question, Christian?
Well, thank you, Serena. Yeah, keep it very basic here. Steve, crime is up nine percent in the one oh five precinct year-to-date, and burglaries are up thirty-six percent. What would you do to sort of get on top of this?
Christian?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. This is for me, right?
Yes.
So, you know, crime is up all over the city, and it's even in our area. And, you know, we're known for years as a low crime area, and that's why a lot of residents are really up in the air and frightened, and they should be. I think part of combating this is, first of all, to have a council member who is actually on the ground and hearing what's going on. For example, we've knocked on doors, and we know now from talking to the people that from two sixty-ninth Street to two hundred-seventieth Street, there's been a rash of car wheels being stolen. People waking up in the morning and finding their cars on cinder blocks, and all four tires are gone, all wheels are gone. They seem to be targeting Hondas and BMWs. A man on Commonwealth Boulevard near eighty-fifth Avenue, he got his house burglarized when he was visiting family in Boston. Unless you have a council member who's on the ground and knows what's going on and can deal with it, then you're not going to handle it. What I would be doing is working closely with all the precincts and the community to find out where the hotspots are and make sure that that our police are actually targeting those areas. So, for example, when we find out that they're stealing wheels on two sixty-ninth and two seventieth street, make sure the CEO of the one oh fifth precinct knows that, and he's sending cars there. I don't think there's a connection right now between the council member and the COs of the precincts, or at least there doesn't seem to be, or the people on the ground doesn't seem to be. We have to work on community policing. We have to engrain the police into the community, and so they can work together with the people to find out what's going on and how we can combat the crime that we're experiencing. I think citywide, we need to work on that. The people and the police have to work as partners along with the council member. I will facilitate that, and I'm looking forward to doing it.
Okay, Steve, thank you. Linda, I guess there were a few sort of jabs, but sort of things in your direction. Do you want to, what do you have to say about, you know, crime going up seven percent and thirty-six percent in burglaries? And do you want to respond at all to what sort of Steve was saying in terms of being on the ground?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm literally sitting in my car because we have so many events that are happening. So that's why I'm taking this from the car. But we actually have very good relationships with all the precincts. There's four precincts in my district. We've been working very closely with them, with Borough North, Borough South, all the COs, the deputy inspectors. Because the violent crimes have gone down, but the burglaries and the car thefts have gone up, from what we've seen. And so that's why I actually worked with a bunch of other, I worked on to pass actually a law on the catalytic converter theft issue by providing etching kits. We just had an event last May. It was super successful. There were actually not enough. And, you know, I'm the only one in this race that's been endorsed by a lot of the police unions. And, you know, I've been working very closely with them because this is a serious concern in this issue in this district, you know. And so, public safety, quality of life issues. And I have to say, as Chair of the Mental Health Disabilities and Addictions Committee, this is also an area where we're trying to provide a lot more programming in schools as well for the students. That is something that is paramount for us to be able to continue doing that. And, you know, this is something that I'm proud of in terms of working with the local precincts. And also, you know, I know that the previous council, it was difficult with the budgets and everything because they, you know, voted for a budget that defunded our police. But that is not something that I have done, and that was something that I was very adamant about, that with crime and everything happening, that that is something that we need to make sure stays in place because we're losing officers. They are, you know, the workforce has been down, and we need to make sure we're supporting them, but also, you know, holding them accountable at the same time. So that's what I've been doing, is really being at a lot of these precinct council meetings and just being part of the conversations with the community. So in terms of me not being around, I don't know, like, I wish I could clone myself because there are so many meetings. Our district is very large, so I try to be in as many places as I can. But if I'm not, my team and my staff are always there at every single civic community board meeting, civic meeting. So my ears and my eyes and ears are on the ground constantly. So we want to hear what the community is saying, what their fears are. So we've been very responsive about that, which is why we came up with that bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Linda. And that question is over to you, Rabia.
Okay, same question, right?
Yes, dealing with crime, the focus is the one oh five precinct, but, you know, obviously, there's more precincts in the district.
So I should say that I have been dealing with nonprofit, and I am dealing with special needs families and children. Mental health issue is a big thing here. I have a firsthand knowledge. One of my kids, like one of our members, the child has autism, but it is ADHD. He has a higher intelligence. But he has been approached by some of his peers for taking drugs like marijuana and other things. And from that, he got an addict, and now we are all trying to focus to get him off that so that he can come back. By the way, he has a successful TikTok channel. So my thing is, instead of carving the crime, of course, we have to carve the crime, but we have to see the root cause for the crime. It is, mental health issue is a big one. We have to focus on that. We are talking about mental health, but what actually are we doing? What our council members or other elected officials, what they're doing actually, literally what they're doing to address this mental health issue that ends up in crime, criminal mentality, criminal behavior? Then we have to look into the poverty, no job, no job security, and the higher value of food and other merchandise. So are we focusing on that? If you go to two stores in our district, one supermarket has two-dollar eggs dozen, and another store has seven dollars in the price of the eggs. So what is going on here? Our life has to be more regulated. And so there has to be some kind of measure to see that our life is regulated. We are getting something for the value. When it is not like that, the criminality goes up. It is not that they get fun out of it. There is a necessity for the life.
Rabia, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be rude, but just Serena?
All right. So the next one, we're going to start with Linda, and we're going to cut it down to ninety seconds for the responses, just so we can answer you and ask the questions from the viewers. So affordable housing and raising rents continue to pose challenges for many residents in our district. How do you plan to tackle the issue of affordable housing and ensure that all residents have access to safe and affordable homes? And what strategies will you implement to stabilize rents, protect tenants' rights, and promote equitable housing policies that address the needs of low-income individuals and families in our communities?
Sure. Thank you for that question. So, you know, as we all know, there's a housing crisis in the city. And I know that the governor had tried to rezone and put a plan out there that was unsuccessfully passed at the state level. And to be honest, I think it has to be well thought out, and it has to be in places that make sense. Because, you know, in this district, if you look, I'm just looking around right here where I'm sitting, and it's all low-rise houses, one-two-family homes, the most is two stories. So I think there's a way to build housing, but in a way that has to be thought through with the neighborhoods in mind. For example, in District Twenty-three, we're a transit desert, so there are literally no railways in our district. We rely heavily on buses and cars. And so the question then becomes, okay, so if that's the case, how are we going to make sure that the infrastructure, the sewer lines, the roads, as well as, you know, the bus routes, which was a big, big, big thing out here in eastern Queens, by the way, because the bus routes, because seniors and students take it, it's highly, highly important. So, and I think, by the way, I want to mention one important thing that we're not talking about as part of the affordable housing conversation is affordable homeownership. And I think that's also a way to build generational wealth. It's a way to really invest in our communities. And so look at spaces that are empty and think through how we can incentivize landlords to rent out those spaces and also create penalties perhaps for landlords if they're not renting out those spaces and just holding on to empty apartments. So I think those are things that we need to look at because this is an all-encompassing approach that we need to take, and also making sure that the community boards and the community voices are front and center because they need to be at the table, and we need to make sure that it makes, you know, that if there's a place that makes sense, that we have services, schools, and enough seats and all the programming that's available, because that's another concern out here, is the overcrowding of the schools. So all those things need to be taken in mind. I think that, you know, it's definitely an issue we need to address for sure. So, you know, the community voices has to be front and center.
Thank you, Linda. Rabia, you have ninety seconds.
Okay, hi. So, yeah, housing is a huge, huge thing in New York City. Poll after poll shows that housing is one of the most important issues facing the New Yorkers. So I should say that even in Albany, they could not vote for the housing, for the affordable housing. So what we can do maybe for the city council, we need to organize lobbying. If possible, if I'm elected, I will take all the people possible from the district, go to Albany, make so much noise that we need that so that Albany is bound to listen to us. So we have to have affordable housing. And for the height of the houses, District Twenty-three is actually a quiet neighborhood. We don't want high-rise building. At the max, we can have four-stories building, but then not more than that. Our characteristics of the neighborhood should remain same, but by doing that, we may be approaching a better solution for affordable housing.
Thank you. And Steve?
Great, yes. Well, first I'll say that, as Rabia said, we're in eastern Queens, there's a lot of, we're a low-density area, and that's the character of our community, and we should work to do everything we can to keep it that way. That being said, sometimes I wonder if our city council understands the basic laws of supply and demand. The housing crisis is very simple and a problem of supply and demand. We have too much demand for housing and not enough supply. So we should be doing everything we can to increase the supply of housing with a focus on affordable housing. We can do the affordable part with incentives, tax abatements, et cetera, for affordable housing. As far as adding to the supply, it's estimated there's somewhere between forty, fifty, or possibly eighty thousand empty rental apartments. The city council, my opponent Linda, said they want to hurt these landlords that they can't afford to get these on the market. We need to incentivize the landlords to bring these apartments back. They can't afford to renovate them, put them on the market without our help because their rent controlled or rent stabilized. I want to keep them affordable, but the city's going to have to help. In addition, there's thousands of empty lots that the city owns across the city that are just sitting there, that are perfect for going ahead and developing low-income housing. There's also city-owned boarded-up buildings. We should be working to convert them. Again, it's supply and demand. We need more housing. If we have more housing, if we have more housing and focus on affordable housing, rents will automatically fall down. It'll also help our homeless crisis. So it's not just, this is a whole picture.
Steve, we've got to wrap it up, mate.
I'm done. That's good.
Okay, good stuff. Okay, Rabia, this is, the next question is for you. Okay, there's been an increase in the number of smoke shops that have been illegally selling cannabis across New York City and the district. How do you propose addressing this issue, and what measures would you implement to ensure compliance?
From my point of view, if I'm elected, I definitely want some regulations because these shops are entertainments. We have a lot more serious issues to look into rather than vape shops. And this is, this actually increases the number of juvenile crimes because there are a lot of snatching and burglary, and all these things are happening because people looking, the juvenile or the youngsters, they are looking for small money to buy these things. So we don't want to encourage and make a lot of vice stores around us to make more temptation for them. So it needs a regulation, a balance in the community. We don't, we may have some, but not too many. It has to be regulated.
Okay, Rabia, thank you. Steve, over to you. Again, the increase in cannabis, you know, stores illegally, you know, being illegally sold. If you could just comment on that.
Well, the key word you just said is illegally. And the irony of this question is that the state just legalized the sale of cannabis, and the reason they did that was to, basically, one of the reasons was to increase taxation revenues, but it was also to regulate the industry. So we know who's selling it, know that it's safe, and we can keep a control on it. The main, the point here is this is illegal, and we need to enforce it. The community, including the council member, needs to work with the local precinct, and these shops need to be closed down. They're operating illegally. No matter what, you know, any kind of business that you're running, and it's illegally, needs to be shut down. And at the end of the day, it's just more enforcement. I'm a former Securities and Exchange Commission attorney. When someone was running a Ponzi scheme that's illegal and against the securities laws of the United States, we shut them down. It's the same thing here. If you're running an illegal cannabis-selling business in our streets, selling to our children, we need to shut them down.
Okay, Steve, thank you. Linda?
Yeah, so actually, this is an issue that we've been talking about at the council because there's only a few legal shops that are licensed in the city. And so there's a bill that's out right now, which I'm signed on to, which is Intro ten zero one, and it prohibits the owners of commercial premises from knowingly leasing a commercial premise to or otherwise allowing them to have unlicensed sellers of these illegal smoke shops that are in place. And so this is something that we've been talking a lot about, to the point where one of our other fellow colleagues is actually, you know, going in herself and checking out these shops and buying them and keeping the receipts and then bringing them to the DA's office. So we've actually been working with the DA as well as the local precincts on this about how to address this because they're literally popping up everywhere. And the danger with this is that it's one thing to be licensed where you know you can control the product and the substance. But the problem is, is that with a lot of these illegal smoke shops, they're selling a lot of these products that where we don't know what is laced in it. We don't know what else is in there. And, you know, this is causing a huge, huge problem. And so this is something that we've been discussing and will address at the council.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Serena?
Okay, for the next question, we're going to start with Steve. The mayor and council speaker have reached a deal in sidewalk dining and roadside dining. The deal would see the outdoor roadside sheds up for about nine months of the year. What strategies do you envision to support in regards to outdoor dining while addressing concerns such as garbage, space allocation, noise control, and maintaining the character of our neighborhood?
Interesting issue. You know, on the one hand, I want our restaurants to succeed. I'm a small business owner myself. I've been an attorney to small businesses. But at the same time, when you've got these sheds that take up way too much space, they attract rats and mice. They're, they are taking up parking spaces. A lot of times, they're an eyesore. I think we really have to look at whether or not nine months is too long. Maybe we do this in the summer months. If you go to any other city, one thing New York City doesn't do well, we don't see what other cities do well and bring it back here. You've got cities like Paris, or London, or Prague. I mean, you see how they do outdoors. There are no sheds, there are no, you know, barriers, there are no propane tanks that could potentially be fire hazards. I think we need to look at what other cities are doing and address that because the sheds, as they are now, are causing problems. I'm glad we're looking at it. I'd be interested to see the answers they had, but that they come up with. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure if I want them any more than three months a year.
Thank you, Steve. Linda?
Thank you. So this is a very, very hot topic right now on the city council because every district is very different. And depending on where your district is, it has different implications about this law. And so we've literally discussed everything from, you know, maybe it should be certain materials that are used, if they're going to be built, what are the regulations? Is this something that we should do all year round, or if not, like, should they only be spot-zoned in certain areas? Not spot-zone, but like, you know what I mean, put in certain areas or neighborhoods or districts. So it has to be, I think, looked at by a case-by-case basis because, for example, what may work in Manhattan is going to be very different for our district in our area here in eastern Queens. Another thing is the Rat Pack, as we say on the council. There's a bunch of bills that were passed around the rat mitigation issue. So we, you know, and it's tricky because we have a lot of cars that we need parking around here. So maybe perhaps in some areas it could work, some areas it won't in this district. But for sure, we need to make sure that they're built safely and that, you know, we know that this helps small business owners for sure because it increases their footprint. But at the same time, we just have to make sure that it's done in a way that makes sense. And I think that we're looking at the laws around this right now to see how they can be, you know, flexible, but also give guidance and regulation so that no one is put in danger either. And so these are all things that we're looking at and talking about right now.
Thank you, Rabia.
Okay, so listen, these things actually was not present before COVID, mostly. It was a very rare thing to see shades and umbrella. And after COVID, the small business or the small restaurants started building a little bit of shade, and then they made- and then they make a structure and then there is the wooden thing and plexiglass. So they have made an extension of the restaurant outside in the sidewalks. So that is, I think, objectionable. A shade which can be folded and taken inside when the weather is not so good, that should not be a problem. But the problem is when they really make a permanent structure, it is supposed, it is not supposed to be a permanent structure and that is causing the most problem for traffic, for pedestrians, for children, the bikers, everybody. So as a city councillor, you have to look at it in a different angle that it does not, it should not hurt the business, as the same time, it should not hurt our community. So there can be a little table, chair, they can, people can sit there, have a drink or something, but it cannot be permanent. It has to be able to be taken inside the restaurant when the time comes. And then it will not cause the problem of debris, rat and all other things. So it cannot be permanent. It has to be removable and very much simple.
Thank you, Rabia. So this question is for you, Linda. The migrant crisis has led to more than seventy thousand asylum seekers coming to New York City the past year. Now, what strain is that putting on the district? And what is the solution, you know, to fix, you know, the crisis? And what are the unique challenges that we're facing in this district?
Thank you. So as you mentioned, yes, this is a crisis that we're facing right now. I have to say, I am not jealous of the mayor at this point because it is a lot to handle. We are shelters to state, we are a shelter state, which is why we have and we see so many folks that are bringing people to New York. And to be honest, it's costing us a lot of money, which is why we need help. You know, these, it's, these folks that are coming are already facing lots of trauma to begin with. And then they're being planted in random places throughout the city. And so we need to, that's why the city council speaker, as well as the leadership of the city council, went to DC. You know, thank you to Senator Chuck Schumer for getting us some of the funds to help pay for this, but it's a drop in the bucket. And, you know, we have a lot of folks that are coming in every day. We get weekly reports from the mayor's office on the asylum seeker situation that's happening right now. And every, you know, as the mayor has said, you know, every district is actually getting these pop-up or slightly more permanent shelters in their districts. And we are no different. We have two that came recently and we got less than twenty-four hours notice that this was going to happen. So I think what we need to do is make sure that we're also putting them in, you know, putting the migrants in places where they have access to services, where they can actually get the help that they need. Again, we are a transit desert, so it's a bit tough for us because we're sort of out in the middle of nowhere. But having said that, you know, I went to actually visit the shelters, I believe, two weeks ago and met with DHS. And, you know, they're trying to do what they can with a bad situation or a tough situation because, you know, we want to be helpful, but at the same time, we are running out of spaces. And so I think they're looking at different options. But again, I think the options that they're looking at can't be on Orchard Beach in a random location where there's no electricity or sewers or anything like that. It has to be in places that actually make sense.
Linda, I'm going to have to get you to wrap it up.
Okay.
Yeah, listen, thanks. Rabia, what's your thoughts on this?
Okay, I am a proud Democrat and I am a supporter of President Biden. But I have to be honest here, that federal government has failed us in this issue. The immigrant values are, of course, we uphold. I myself is an immigrant. But I came through the legal channel. I was not a burden to the community. Here, the people who comes in, in a, it is an influx of people. And then they are put in places in our neighborhood and we are paying for their food, shelter and bills. They want to work, you mind it, they want to work, but their work authorizations are not there so that they cannot go back to the world. They cannot take up work. It takes hundred and eighty days to get a work permit. So we are paying for them. This has to be resolved. They should be able to work with their work permit, not illegally. So that can actually solve a bit of the problem. And at the city council, we should analyze the influx, how many people are coming in. We should have a track and we have to negotiate with the federal government for financial support, more and more. We are a shelter city, I understand, but there has to be some financial support for taking this burden on us.
Thank you, Rabia. And Steve, would you like to answer that one?
Sure. First of all, you know, I am the grandson of four immigrants. All four of my grandparents were immigrants. My wife immigrated from Haiti when she was a teenager. So I am, I am pro-immigrant. We are a nation of immigrants and I'm very proud of that. Now, as far as this crisis goes, the financial burden needs to be taken from Washington. Washington needs to come and help us. There's not a lot we can do here financially to work on this crisis. We need, we need help from Washington and I think it's something that we really, really have to work on. As far as housing the migrants, you know, we shouldn't be putting them in places where there's no transit, that they can't get around, that they, that they're stuck in one spot. So we really need to be, to look at where their house. And then the last part I have is, Rabia, it was exactly right. It's ridiculous that these people come here and we don't let them work. They came here to work. They came here seeking asylum and they are ready to work. And if you talk to any small businesses like I do, we have a worker shortage. You have a worker shortage and have migrants, immigrants who are willing to work. We should do something where the Fed, and this is a federal issue also, we've got to get to the point where we can get these people a work permit within thirty days. At that point, they can get out there, they can be working, they don't have to be shelved, they don't have to be in shelters, they don't have to be fed. They, you know what? These are hard-working people. Think about it. You've got families that are trying to escape civil war and gangs who've taken their, their mother and father, taken their children six hundred miles through a desert just to get to safety, just a place where they can raise a family.
Steve, I've got to stop you. I hear what you're saying for sure, but we've got to move on. Serena?
So we're going to start with Rabia for this one. Currently, there are stark differences between the mayor and any city council member on what next year's budget should contain. And the mayor has enacted cuts across city agencies, arguing that we need to fiscally, to be fiscally prudent, given the cost of the migrant crisis. How would you approach these negotiations to bridge the gaps and ensure that the final budget reflect the needs of our diverse community while maintaining fiscal responsibility?
First of all, I should say, I myself am a migrant and I know that migrants need a lot of support. The budget, budget cut always hurts people, hurt people because government is there to help people, not hurt us. So the budget should be balanced. It should not be only favoring the migrants. But as I already mentioned, that for migrants, they are here to help our, to help themselves, help us. Can you believe how many people are working in the backside of our restaurants, in our fields, in our everyday work, the delivery works? How many people are working there? Without that, our US economy will be in a standstill position, I should say. So we should not be going very strict on them. The balance should be the best thing to do. A budget that really reflects harmoniously, it goes to the migrants as well as the other sectors like police, the safety, roads and highways, infrastructure. So it has to be a balance there.
Thank you, Steve.
An issue. I remember when I was counsel to Councilman Gredchenchik and times were really good. And we were always imploring the speaker to put more money in the rainy day funds and to make sure that we would be prepared when the economy turns down or the revenues fall. And we're at that point, not that the economy's bad, but our revenues aren't meeting or looks like they won't meet what we need down the road. So we've got to look at where we can cut and we've got to look at where we cannot cut. We need to look at efficiencies. We're going to spend, I think, next year, they're talking about four billion dollars on homeless services. Now, we certainly need to help the homeless and we need to do everything we can. And I've been trying to get a good friend of mine out of a shelter for several months now. And the red tape is completely ridiculous. But there's, at any given night, there's sixty-five, sixty-six thousand residents in our shelters. I mean, for four billion dollars, we could have handed each one of those residents sixty-six thousand dollars. There's efficiencies that we can do without cutting off our services. I'll end by saying, and I've said this over and over again, unlike the current council member, I will never cut the school budget. That is a red line for me. And I've said over and over again, I will never vote for a budget that cuts the school budget. There's certain red lines that we cannot touch. We can look across the board, see where we can cut, see where we can find efficiencies. But certain red lines we can't cut and the schools are one of them.
Hey Linda?
Thank you. Yes, I agree. The schools are essential. And I just need to address that lie because I did not cut schools and the school budgets are fully intact. And I would never vote, like, the schools we need to keep intact, the police, public safety, those are things we need to keep intact. And I would never vote to defund the police, which I know that my opponent and predecessor have done. So that is not something that I would do because this is a time where we need to really hit the mayor on the pegs. We need to make sure that he is not, you know, cutting a lot of the essential services. I've been saying over and over, mental health, supportive services, mental health continuum, services in schools. These are things that we really, really, really need to focus on because these are the things that will help keep our communities out, you know, of, you know, the criminal justice system, out of, you know, prevention from homelessness. And so these are the things that we need to focus on, COLAs as well for nonprofits, so that we can have pay parity, fair wages. Three Ks is super important. You know, the healthcare workers, these are all things that are super important that we need to make sure are not going to get cut from the budget. So, you know, making sure that those things stay in place and that we fight for that is something that I'm committed to doing, that we will be doing, that we're already talking about because I'm on the budget team. And these are all conversations that we're having right now because we do not want the pegs to take effect and to go into place.
Can I, can I rebut something in there?
Yeah, sure, Steve. You have one minute.
Sure. Well, the council member keeps saying that she didn't cut the school budget and the schools are fully funded, which is a lie. And she keeps repeating the lie. And if, just because she repeats a lie doesn't mean it becomes true. She even sent me this mail piece that says, schools are fully funded. She voted to cut the budget by four hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. I used to think it was four hundred and sixty-nine. It was actually four hundred and eighty-eight million. Just a few weeks ago, the controller let out this report about school budgeting for last year and going forward. I will read you one sentence. After adjusting for the register relief allocations, schools still faced a net collective shortfall of about five percent or three hundred and seventy-three million dollars. So this idea that Linda Lee suddenly got this seven hundred million dollars in COVID funds and put it into the schools and the schools are fully funded is a lie. And I'm the first vice president of my kid's PTA and I'm in the schools three, four times a week. And Linda should go and talk to the teachers and talk to their parents and talk to the principals because we've struggled all year.
Steve, we've got to get you to wrap it up, right?
Sure. I'm saying, we've struggled all year. The PTA has had to raise much more money than we've ever done before to make up for those budget cuts. And to keep saying that the schools are fully funded.
Listen, I'm sorry, man. We've got to put it over to Linda if you want to have a comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, that is just not true. The school budgets were not cut. They were whole from the actual, when was that? Because I'm telling you right now.
May, 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 two thousand twenty-three. It was weeks ago.
Listen, the school budgets are whole. The chancellor has even said it. I actually have the list of school budgets in my district and it has not been cut. I do talk to the principals regularly. I have visited every single school multiple times during the year. So, you know, including, you know, PS forty-six. And these are conversations that I have been having with the principals. So for you to say that I'm not having these conversations is not true. And I'm telling you, the school budgets, this is a lie. The school budgets have remained whole and they will remain whole starting this fall.
So are you, are you calling?
Steve, that's it, mate. All right, we're going to move on to the next question. Thank you. And I'll be asking that one. And Steve, you'll be, you'll be the first one to answer. Transportation and infrastructure are significant challenges in District Twenty-three. And as you guys have both noted, or then it's often referred to as a transit desert. What initiatives do you propose to ensure that residents have accessible, reliable and affordable transportation options? And how do you plan to improve road conditions and overall infrastructure to improve the quality of life for residents in the community?
Well, on the infrastructure side, when I worked for the pre-councilman Gredchenchik, we, we did put a lot of money into the district on infrastructure. We worked hard to get certain infrastructure projects done in the district. You can see right now they're working or they may have finished, finishing the median on Union Turnpike. So, you know, we've done that. As far as the transportation desert part of this, you're exactly right. And, you know, I've lived here my whole life. We used to say there wasn't a subway in our district. They redistricted the lines and they gave us one subway at One Seventy-Ninth Street within a block. But when I worked for Councilman Gredchenchik for six years, you couldn't take a train from our district anywhere. We need to have better transportation to the subways and to the Long Island railroads. Two things that I would work hard on was, one, my father took the Q seventy-five bus from Bayside Oakland Gardens to One Seventy-Ninth and Hillside for twenty years to go to work. Somewhere about fifteen, eighteen years ago, they cut that line. There's no way to get from where I live in that Oakland Garden section of Bayside to the subway, to the F train. Another bus that needs to be redone is, or rebuilt, put back up, is the Q seventy-nine, which used to go north and south into the Long Island Railroad Station at Little Neck. If we're telling people to take mass transit and we're in a transportation desert, we have to provide good bus service to those subways. One last thing before you cut me off, I'd also work hard on working the east-west buses on Union Turnpike and Hillside Avenue, that's the forty-three and the forty-six, and on Jamaica Avenue. Because again, those are direct lines from our district to the subways.
Okay, Steve. Thank you very much. Linda?
Thank you. So when I was actually at my former nonprofit organization in Bayside, I remember when the MTA bus route redesign issue came up right before COVID hit. It was literally the most number of people that I've seen in that community space because that's how much people rely on the buses and the bus routes here in Eastern Queens. And so, you know, we actually did a walkthrough of, you know, the district with DOT as well as with the Transportation Chair, Councilmember Selvina Brooks-Powers. And we need more transportation access, right? Because I know that right now the MTA is looking at efficiency with their bus routes. But the problem is, is that sometimes when they talk about efficiency, that means that they're cutting bus stops. However, because we have a lot of seniors and students in our district and people with disabilities, we can't just cut the bus stops and, you know, use that in the name of efficiency because we have to make sure that even if it's a couple of blocks apart, yes, it may be slower in terms of the bus getting from one stop to the other. However, that is a concern that needs to be addressed. And the bus network redesign and the MTA, we're having to, we're talking about those things right now with them as well as the transportation and DOT committees because, and I have to say, the Bus Drivers Union as well. So we've been talking to all of those folks because this is really going to have a larger impact across the district. Um. So we've been talking to all of those folks because this is really going to have a larger impact across the district.
All right. Thank you, uh, Rabia.
All right. So transportation-wise, I think uh everybody said a lot of things. Of course, the transportation is a big problem. We go to work, we go to school and we have to take buses. They are very irregular and no time or no schedule. And you stand for Q one bus for from uh Bell Rose and that it never comes. So of course, we would like to have MTA to be more frequent and more timely. That one thing needs to be assured for our community, more bus services, not cutting the services. That is the last thing you can do for our community. Has to make sure we have frequent buses and timely buses. Infrastructure, if you go around our community, you will see a lot of big buildings, commercial, then uh all these new structures, but it is empty. Nobody is renting that place. So infrastructure, if we just keep building and no business there, it is actually hurting the district, no income. So we have to make a wise decision before giving a permission, whether it is viable for our community or we need more residential. So that, that are the policy issues that we need to make. We have to look into it before giving a permission for a commercial building. And also, if we, also, we didn't mention about Creedmo today, but Creedmo is also a developmental zone that is a hot topic right now and it has been a hot topic for last twenty years and nothing has happened. It could have been a lot of things, good housing proposition, good school, good park, but nothing happened. As if I'm elected, I definitely look it up, make it a part of our community, not an isolated part of the community.
All right. Thank you, Rabia. Everybody, Serena?
Well, unfortunately, we're running out of time, so we're gonna have to go to closing statements. We're gonna give each candidate ninety seconds for your closing statement. And we're gonna start with Linda.
Thank you. Um. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about a lot of the issues that are important to District Twenty-three. Um, you know, as 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 I've mentioned and as others have mentioned too, you know, there's also commonality and similarity similarities between a lot of the issues we care about. Um. Education, of course, is really important um to this district. Uh, we have some of the best schools in this council district, and so we will, I will keep, make sure to keep that funded and fully funded. Um, you know, Medicare and the retirees, the senior center programs, these are all important issues. And I'm always, my whole career has been dedicated actually to supporting our seniors, and this is something very important that I'm fighting for um with Department for the Aging as well as the budget. And of course, public safety, um, you know, these are important issues to our districts. And, you know, I I know that our opponents may have been um saying a lot of things that may not be true. But, you know, in my opinion, I think progress in government, it takes, you know, it's easy to have um posts and and, you know, you know, be upset about things and slander and whatever this, that. But, you know, in in all honesty, progress happens. It's a lot of hard work. It's a coalition building. Um. It really is building those relationships across the aisle with people that you may not necessarily agree with everything on, but where's the commonality? How do we push these issues forward on the council? How do we work together with fifty other members um to get things passed that are important to each of our districts? And so, um, you know, this, I've always been an advocate, that has been my role for the last, you know, my professional career for twenty years, speak up, speaking up for the marginalized communities, um, speaking up for those that, um, you know, don't have a voice. And so that is what I will continue to do. And as a council member, you know, I need to make sure to, again, meet the community where they are, really listen to their concerns, and then also try to pass legislation, provide funding that reflects the needs of the community. So I will continue to do that. I really hope that I get re-elected and that people will vote for me um on June twenty-seventh or on June seventeenth, early voting. Um. And I'm just very thankful and proud to be um the council member of this district and hope to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, Rabia.
Oh, yes. Uh, so we have come to the end, of course. So of, I'm a mother. First of all, I'm a mother, a taxpayer and a homeowner of this district, beautiful district of District Twenty-three. I have lived my life here. I raised my children and they have gone to college. And one of my son, he is autistic and he stays with me. So I have been facing a lot of ups and downs and I would like to say that as a South Asian candidate, um, I will, I am very proud that um we, I have got a chance to represent the community. If I'm elected, I would definitely look up the issues that are bothering our minority community as well as all other community. It is, it is a diverse community. We need our voice and we can do that if we give your vote and you can come out because this is an important election. Though it is not a general election, the primary is very important and every citizen should exercise their right to vote. Our forefathers struggled for it, they fight for it, they, and this right has been achieved and we need to exercise that. And if you exercise, you can have your voice in the table. We need our voice in the government to make them hea- hear us. And that's why I need people to come out and vote. Uh, do my best, if I'm elected, to the issues we have discussed today and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabia. And lastly, Steve?
Sure. Um. There are plenty of issues I'd love to talk about, but since uh time is short and we're ending, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to four. And I call them the four Ss. The first S is schools. Um. No matter how many times Linda keeps saying that she didn't cut the school budget and the schools are fully funded. Um. If anyone who deals with the schools, like me, being a a PTA, first vice president and a child, and having a child in those schools, we know those school budgets were cut. We know the schools have struggled. And I urge everybody to go to the Controller's website and look for this report that was issued just in May of two thousand twenty-three called Spotlight School Budget allocations, a primer, and it's right there, easy to find. Um. I promise the district, I promise District Twenty-three, I will never cut the school budget. Um. Seniors, um, suddenly Linda is now champion for our retirees. She's been silent up until this week. It wasn't until the political heat started coming down on her that she suddenly sided with the seniors. Both my parents were were New York City retirees. I've been working with those retirees since I was with Councilman Gredchenchik when when Mayor de Blasio first proposed this. Um. This is a bait and switch. We can't let it happen. I will lead the fight when I'm in City Hall. I hope it's fixed by then, but if it's not, I will lead the fight in City Hall to turn it back. Safety, I was instrumental in getting um the one-sixteenth precinct built down in Southeast Queens, which will cut the hundred and fifth precinct in half, putting more cops on the street. I'm the only person that's running who's actually put more cops on the street. And finally, the last S is super PACs because two super PACs that are uh funded.
Steve, I'm sorry, mate. We've got to, we've got to close it down. We've got another forum right now. So, you know, I know it's abrupt, but uh we've got to uh call it a day.
But well, you should, well, you should know, Kristin, that forced two super PACs by by Manhattan real estate billionaires are funding Linda's campaign and are preparing to attack.
We're gonna have to take, that's for another day, Steve.
Um. Okay, I got it out.
Yeah. All right. Listen, um, th- thank you very much, everybody. Uh, Linda, I would have probably liked you to have a response there, but I apologize. Uh, but we we better run. Rabia, thank you too for joining us today and best wishes to everyone in the race.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.